Welcome to the September 23rd, 2025 City Council Meeting. This meeting of the City Council is recorded on Zoom with a link that is posted on the agenda. If you are calling on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button. You can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications and public hearings to be recognized to speak. Technical difficulties arise and the Zoom link is interrupted during an in-person hybrid meeting of the City Council and a quorum is present. The meeting may continue after efforts have been made to reestablish the link. The minute shall note the interruption. It is the finding of the City of Gloucester that no individual should be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender, identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex or sexual orientation. This evening, we have Ward Two Councillor Dylan Benson, Councillor-at-Large Valerie Gilman, Ward One Councillor Scott Memmard, Ward Three Councillor Marjorie Grace, Councillor-at-Large Jason Grow, Ward Five Councillor and Council Vice President Sean Nolan. And I'm Tony Gross, Council President. And we have Danielle Argentino, the Assistant City Clerk. And we have our Building Commissioner, Robert Vacari. And we have our Health Department Director Dominique Hurley. We have Shafan Callahan from the Health Department and Suzanne Egan. They are both online. Suzanne Egan is our legal attorney. And is Alex Copelman on? Alex Copelman here? No. We have John Gillis is here, our IT Director for his appointment. And the next order of business, Madam Clerk. Flag salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence.
I'd like to call for a moment of silence tonight for John Griffin. He was a long-term firefighter for the City of Gloucester. He was a great father and grandfather and a wonderful person. I've gotten to know him over the past 30 years. Age is the number one cause of death, not pile it off. And I think that we should just take a moment of silence for Billy and he can do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Oral communications.
All right. Anyone in the audience would like to speak at oral communications? Please state your name and address or the... Oh, wait a minute, I have to read the preamble, sorry. Sit down. "The public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communication shall allow any resident and/or property owner and/or business owner who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the Council. Make their statement without debate and the City Council will refer matters to the Office of the Mayor. Person speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each." Name and address or company affiliation that's in Gloucester.
Good evening, my name is Clay Kern. I live at 28 Green Street and owner of North Shore Adventures in Rockport. This is a part of Connecting Community with Words as part of a NOAA grant secured by Manchester, Cape Van Climate Coalition, Water Alliance and the Town Green. If you or anyone you know has ever had a cancer diagnosis, you know that restoring health often requires undergoing painful treatment. The treatment itself is challenging but necessary to help your body get healthy again. A large part of me feels that way towards our current climate crisis and sea level rise. Twenty-five years ago, my mother had Hodgkin's lymphoma. Today she's alive and well because she was willing to give up an entire year of her life to undergo the chemo that allows her to be alive today. When I see my own storefront flooded more times than ever, there's no denying that something is out of balance and needs treatment. Our sea is rising and our climate is changing and we are losing species around the world at lightning speed. Climate change is destroying our way of living, our economy and our society. Reducing our carbon output while taking care of our vulnerable populations is like getting chemotherapy to stop the cancer. You know what's going to be the most painful thing that you've ever experienced. You know you're going to lose your hair, not be able to eat and inject life-altering medicine poison into your body. You also know that if you don't do it, the chances of survival are almost nothing. If you follow through with the treatments, your chances of survival improve. Some might disagree with why climate is changing, but it's happening and the science has been clear for decades. People who live and work closely with the natural world like myself and John Porter, owner of Roy Moore Lobster in Rockport, we see these changes firsthand. We have lived with ocean chemistry changing, the seas rising and impacting every species out there, including us. This affects our buildings and our businesses. John thinks that we need to stop kicking the can down the road and stop doing study after study, which yield minimal changes. We need to do what needs to be done and it won't be easy and we need action now. We need to change our petroleum-based systems as soon as possible. ExxonMobil scientists and other private researchers have accurately predicted the impacts of carbon emissions for more than 50 years, but because it would negatively impact their bottom line, they've kept them to wraps. Our government has known about these issues for the same time scale and not much has gotten done besides some solar panels on the White House roof in 1977, which were quickly removed in 1986. Making the massive changes that we need to make can happen defensively after it's too late or offensively. We need to come together as a community to face this threat, just like we did during the World Wars and Great Depression. No one has all the answers to what the medicine is to slow climate change, but there are plenty of actions out there that can make large impacts. Some of those include requiring food waste to be composted, reducing our meat intake, investing in our electrical grid and requiring electrification for everything as possible, building micro nuclear plants and other alternative energies, fixing methane leaks. We also need to help our waterfronts by stopping ensuring waterfront properties that are prone to being flooded. We also need to start building infrastructure to protect our communities with 100-year scale in mind.
Ten seconds.
Design new codes and standard requirements for heating and for building within these flood zones. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anything you'd like to leave with the clerk? Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the... Step right up. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, thank you very much. My name is Karen Tibbetts. I live at 14 Watson Street on Rocky Neck. First of all, the first thing I want to say is thank you to all of you. I know how much you dedicate your time and I just want to thank you for everything the City Council does for the City of Gloucester and its citizens. So, thank you very much. So, I want to do a huge thank you to President Tony Gross, a past Chairperson of Gloucester's Waterways Board where I've served the board now for 11 years. Tony educated, mentored, guided us as a regulatory and law-abiding, responsible overseeing Gloucester's 60 miles of waterfront. So, under his rule, I'll be quick and right to the point. As of last week, Gloucester's Building Commissioner deemed all metal poles, regardless of height, location and safety, to adjacent neighbors lawn ornaments, needing no permit or inspection. Now, I want you to imagine a 20-foot metal pole inches from your property line, swaying in the wind in a tidal flood zone, threatening the safety of your little grandchildren and dogs. Wouldn't you hope your city would require a permit or inspection for at least best safety sake? Most neighbors would be concerned of their neighbor's safety, meaning safety concerns of a huge pole falling, hurting or perhaps killing your dogs and grandchildren. However, that's not my case. I live in fear daily. This is why I would encourage all of you to consider adopting some kind of ordinance or rules, maybe using guidelines such as 2006's International Building Code Section 105.1 that requires a guideline of safety and reason for extremely tall, heavy and misplaced metal flag poles. My request would be those in authority, please take under consideration the safety of neighbors' childrens and dogs. When and where it falls also suggests liability as well. Also to be considered reviewing zoning laws such as a dangerous height and weight of a 20-foot metal pole in an R-10 zone now allowed inches from a neighbor's property only makes sense for those in authority to adopt guidelines of safety. Gloucester does have guidelines for luminaires of lights obstructing sleeping and lighting up of neighbors' windows all night from such tall and unruly poles. Again, however, we have to keep our blinds closed all night long. So, a wonderful ordinance of guidelines could help a future of victims suffering from huge misplaced and dangerous poles. Again, thank you for your service and your consideration to keep children and pets safe.
Thank you. Was there something you'd like to leave with us?
Yes, I would.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else in the room that'd like to speak? Step up to the podium. Items not on the agenda.
Hi, my name is Zor McInnixstein. I live at 594 Western Ave. I am here to talk about the parking on Washington Street. I emailed everyone who had their email address, the minutes of the meeting that you folks had, the City Council, and I just wanted to address the fact that all of the distances that the City Council requested, the no parking zones have not been adhered to. The DPW has placed the signs at different locations than the 40 feet and 39 feet as ordered by the City Council. Also, previously, the 30-feet no parking in front of George's Restaurant was also not placed at 30 feet. It was placed at approximately 70 feet. And when I listened to the deliberation of the City Council, it was agreed on by, when the vote actually went forward, to remove one parking space in both locations and to retain one parking space. One of the City Council's members quoted, "Parking spaces are like gold for small businesses," which is true. So, since the parking has been removed in the seven months of, from February 1st till the end of August, we've had 1,850 fewer guests, which have absolutely affected our business. I don't know how many accidents may or may not have been prevented because we have no way to measure that. So, I would just like the City Council, since it was their intention on the vote that was approved, was to keep one parking space in all of these locations, to adjust the sign location to the correct distance to allow for one parking space, which was the intent of the City Council when they voted on it. What is out there now is 55 feet of no parking before the turn on to Centennial, which was voted down by the majority. However, if you go there, that is what we see right now. Some comments have been made about the legality of distance from crosswalks. Go out on a Dale Street right now and go measure how far the first parking space is from the crosswalk. I think it's the same line. I don't even think it's six inches. So, I don't think it is right to harm small businesses by enacting rules in certain situations and ignoring them in other situations. We employ 30 people. We have been in Gloucester. The business has been there since 1940. And now, in the last four years since we've owned it, we have seven fewer parking spaces. The Sal has owned it for about 40 years and zero parking spaces were taken away. I'm all for public safety. There are still accidents happening regularly. The removal of parking has not fixed the problem. Let's fix the problem and let's allow our small businesses to survive. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room that'd like to speak? Okay, that's not on the agenda. Huh? Yeah, no. Windermore Street is going to be sent back to committee. There will be no vote on Windermore Street this evening.
Right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Confirmation of new appointments.
Councillor Nolan.
I have a mic. Val, can you hear me? So, first up, we have for IT Director, we have John Gillis, fulfilling an expirate term, term to end 2027, with one additional term, GCO Section 2-260, term to end 214-2029. John, how you doing tonight?
Good evening, my name is John Gillis.
You can just speak into the mic a little bit.
Good evening, my name is John Gillis. I'm a resident of Gloucester. I've been with the City IT team now for a little over six months. A little bit about my background, I have over 30 years of IT experience, predominantly with a large telecommunications company. I started there after college in a management training program as a computer programmer. And I transitioned into an application developer, systems analyst position, and then I transitioned into their IT managerial track.
John, can you get the microphone a little closer? It's for the recording.
Sure. The IT guys having trouble with the microphone. So, yeah, and then I've been in an IT managerial capacity or function for over 20 years. And then, when I left that company this past March, I was a Director in the Corporate Systems Organization. The reason I left that company was really twofold. One, for the second time in my career, they presented over 30,000 management employees a voluntary separation agreement to leave the business. I thought it was a good time for me for a couple of reasons. One, to kind of go out and close that chapter of my career on my own terms. And the second was really to kind of give me some incentive to look at other IT opportunities where I could take my IT knowledge and experience and do something in IT, but something different. And I am extremely grateful to Mayor Verga and Jill Cahill for supporting my application to join the City IT team. The City IT team has been terrific. I can't thank them enough for all their help, support and helping onboard me. And that goes, you know, across all departments here in the administration. I know Dominique and Robert behind me and they've been terrific to work with. And it's really been refreshing going from the private sector to the public sector. The environment, the culture, you know, how people, you know, really help each other out and care. Again, it's been really refreshing and I'm very fortunate to be able to not only live but work in the community, hopefully for time to come.
Excellent, thank you, John. Is there any councillor questions or comments for John?
John, welcome. These are important shoes you're filling here and we all rely on you and your services. If you could just briefly speak to the issue that many of us worry about and were the primary, as employees of the city, vulnerabilities, but our IT vulnerabilities and steps that you take to avoid them and training and outreach so that we all are on the same team and collaborating to avoid any IT vulnerabilities that could result in horrific results for the city.
Yes, thank you. If it looks suspicious, what do they say? If it, you know, looks funny, don't hit it, right? That's what I tell my mother-in-law all the time. Don't hit a link that looks suspicious. But, no, we have, you know, we rely on, you know, vendors and service providers, you know, to, you know, look out for those types of things coming into our network. You know, we do things regarding email, we do things regarding, you know, our network, servers, et cetera, you know. And then, you know, we have training. We do monthly training curriculum that, you know, we ask people to participate in. Some of them, it may seem, you know, really not relative or maybe silly at times, but they're effective. You'd be surprised, but they are effective. And, you know, we participate in different groups, different trainings ourselves from an IT perspective. And there's information coming in every day regarding cybersecurity. And, you know, we pay attention to that as well.
Anybody else? With that being said, I'll read the motion. On a motion by Councillor Majota, seconded by Councillor Grace, the Orders Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that John, sorry, recommend that the City Council appoint John Gillis as IT Director, term to expire 214-2027. And in accordance with GCO Section 2-260, to appoint him to one additional term, term to end 214-2029, and I so move.
Second.
Discussion. Councillor Worthley.
Question. I saw your resume, you're more than qualified. Thank you for doing this. I didn't know that we could appoint for two terms at the same time. And I...
It notes the Gloucester Code and Ordinance Section 2-260 that says that you can.
I've never seen that in 20 years, so...
Yeah, I looked it up. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Yays have it, nine to zero.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Councillor Nolan.
We have the Zoning Board of Appeals. We have Axel Ruiz, who's been sitting there all night worrying about everything. And I can tell you that from meeting him at O-N-A on two different occasions, he has nothing to worry about. How you doing tonight, Axel?
Good afternoon, I'm doing great, especially after that wonderful introduction. Thank you.
If you just want to tell the full council a little bit about yourself and why you want to be in this position?
Sure. My background is in residential architecture. I've been working at a residential firm in Danvers for the last three years. Over that time, we've prepared a number of zoning petitions to the different boards throughout the North Shore and I've found that process to be very gratifying on the end of the petitioner. And I've been sitting on the meetings here in Gloucester this past year and I've been very heartened by seeing a board that has been very willing to work with its community and to demystify the zoning ordinance to the Gloucester public. And I'd like to be a part of that.
Excellent. Sorry about that, I was a little... We have Paul Tucker in the house and he's a pretty special person. So, and he can sit at the big table behind you if you like with the rest of the administration. Is there any questions from the City Council? You can do it, Mike.
Axel, I'm super excited about your being appointed to this board. It's probably, you know, the hardest one out there. And I am so hopeful that you will be able to encourage other people from your generation to get involved in this community. We need to bring younger people in to keep the momentum going. And, you know, all of us old people up here, we can't do it forever. So, thank you.
Councillor Benson.
Dylan, he's not old.
Thank you, I'll just say a comment too. And as the youngest person up here by far, I'm just teasing, right? Right, 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 right. But anyway. We're no longer green behind the ears. But anyway, I just want to say you bring, I've seen your resume, you bring a lot of experience. And I look forward to seeing what you bring forward. And also, maybe in the future, you'll be a full-fledged member to the ZBA as well. So, I appreciate it and thank you for stepping up. And I concur that we do need to see more young people stepping up for various positions across the board. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Gilman.
Thank you, Axel, thank you so much. And I just wanted to comment, this is my last term on the City Council and I've been on planning and development for 10 years. And we so much rely on the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Planning Board to be our partners and to be on their game and to know what's going on in the city. And it seems like you are going to be a great candidate to take on that opportunity. So, thank you and I wish you luck. And I'll be coming to watch the meetings in the future, but I appreciate you stepping up. Thank you.
Councillor Nolan.
I couldn't accept myself to. Axel, you're going to be great. I'm excited, it's been a long time coming. There's so many opportunities for people with information in their own fields that can help out these committees. Greg did a great job with picking you. I think that your experience and your youth is going to be an asset to us to bring forward more information that some of us may not know. I mean, Jason did say that Dylan's a little green behind the ears and you are too. You're new to this, but that's what we need right now in America is we need more people to step up with younger views, especially in architecture and how things should be and understanding what it's like to be on the ZBA. And people come to you with very complicated issues and they're looking for help. They're looking for relief is what they're there for. It's, the key word is relief. It may be for an ADU, it could be for a simple shed. But to that person that comes to that board looking for something, that may mean more than what you think. It's what they're looking to do. It could be a husband and wife looking to do a podding shed. It could be to an addition for a in-law, for a sick relative or a parent that needs to be there. And it's very important that you understand the laws and the rules, but also have compassion to share that with them and give them good advice and lead them through that. And I can't wait for this to happen. Thank you.
Councillor Worthley.
Thank you, President Gross. Axel, first, I'm thrilled that you're here, finally. And I read your resume and I've seen you in action. You're very capable and you'll do a fantastic job. I just want to be very clear, we haven't met before today. And when your appointment came the first time, I did draw attention to the fact at the time there was a residential requirement for three years. That was not at any point a reference on your capacity or your character or your skillset. It was just checks and balances between the City Council and the Mayor's office to follow the ordinance. We've since changed that ordinance, which makes it, I don't know how long you've been here, that's not even what we're discussing right now. I just want to make sure you know that there's no animosity, you weren't targeted. It was just simply the time that you were here and that ordinance at that point said you weren't allowed to yet, but I'm thrilled that we finally get this point. And I'm sorry that it took a little longer, but appreciate you. Good luck.
Would you like to read the recommendation?
I would. So, on a motion by Councillor Majota, sorry. On a motion by Councillor Grace, seconded by Councillor Majota, the Orders Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, recommend that the City Council appoint Axel Ruiz to the Zoning Board of Appeals, term to end 215-2028, and I so move.
Okay. Point of information, quick question. I heard Councillor Benson say that maybe at some point he could be a full-fledged member.
He is a full-fledged member.
This is a full-fledged member.
He is, yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Motion made by Councillor Nolan and who seconded?
Who did?
Jason.
Councillor Grow seconded.
Sorry. Somewhere else.
All right, motions have been made and seconded, discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yays have it, nine to zero. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Axel, thank you very much. Long time coming.
Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda.
Any councillors who'd like to remove any matter off the consent agenda? Councillor Grow.
I'd like to remove RC 2025-006.
And I would like to remove number one, under Communications and Invitations. I'll accept a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Grow, seconded by Councillor Gilman. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Yays have it, nine to zero. Councillor Grow.
I'd like to make a motion to waive a notice to a butters in accordance with GCO Section 1.11.4B and set the public hearing date to Tuesday, October 28th, 2025. and further to vote to refer to PND and the planning board.
Motion made by Council Gross, seconded by Council Gilman. Discussion.
Just very quickly. This is a broad, citywide change in the inclusionary housing requirements that were recommended by the planning board. And as such, we can invoke the 1.11.4B to not set individual notifications and do it as a general notification to the city.
Thank you. And I would like to, what I... Oh. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, ayes have it. Sorry. And I remove the proclamation from the city council to commemorate September 15th to October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month, because we're going to vote on it actually on October 14th. But Council Benson would like to have the opportunity to read that so that we have it read tonight, and even though we won't be voting on it. Council Benson.
Yeah, thank you. And I will begin. Thank you, Council President. And I'll begin reading. Whereas each year, the United States observes the National Hispanic Heritage Month by celebrating cultural heritage and contributions of those whose ancestors were indigenous to North America, as well as those who came from Spain, Mexico, Caribbean, Central America, and South America. Whereas the city of Gloucester acknowledges the contributions and impact that Hispanic and Latino Americans have made and continue to make in our community through the social, cultural, and economic vibrancy of our great city. And whereas several Latin American countries celebrate their independence anniversaries on September 15th, including Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, while Mexico and Chile celebrate their anniversaries on September 16th and September 18th, respectively, highlighting the significance of these observance. And, sorry, I was... And whereas, what began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Johnson was expanded by President Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15th and ending on October 15th. And whereas, in the words of one of America's most important civil rights leaders, Cesar Chavez, "Preservation of one's culture does not require contempt or disrespect for other cultures. Therefore, we celebrate the contributions of the vibrant Hispanic and Latino diaspora in our city, including individuals from Mexico, Guatemala, Honduras, El Salvador, and many other countries throughout Latin America." And whereas, while other parts of the country attempt to erase history and diminish the contributions of Latino and Hispanic Americans, the city of Gloucester takes great pride in its rich diversity of cultures and people, as well as the contributions made by our Latino and Hispanic residents, from local business owners to doctors, lawyers, and community activists, to name a few, in shaping our present, shaping, sorry, our past, present, and future. And whereas, we also recognize that Gloucester cannot thrive unless our Hispanic and Latino families and communities succeed within our community. Whereas, and whereas, in the words of one of the most significant American women in the civil rights movement for the advancement of Latino Americans and all Americans, Dolores Horta, every movement in our organizing opportunity, every person, a potential activist, every minute, a chance to change the world.
Is this still continuing in the proclamation?
It's almost done, yeah. So, and change the world. Therefore, we recognize Hispanic and Latino community members who have been agents for change for the betterment of our entire city, our state, and our country. Now, therefore, be resolved that the City Council of Gloucester does hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th as National Hispanic Heritage Month. Now, therefore, be it further resolved that the City of Gloucester, the City Council of Gloucester calls upon all residents to join in celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month. Thank you. Thank you.
And next year, we'll do it in first meeting of September.
If I'm here next year, but anyway, thank you.
Council, do we need to just approve this back on the consent agenda?
I think we just need to accept it as, just as we accepted Jason's removal, we need to accept it as part of the consent agenda. That's all.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I'll accept a motion to accept this back into the consent agenda.
Second.
Yeah, but we pulled two off, so we had to do those. So, I guess not back on, but as part of...
A move that we accept this for council vote at the next meeting.
Second.
Second. Counselor, motion made by Counselor Gross, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion. Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
September 16th, Budget and Finance Standing Committee report.
Council Memhard.
We're going to, because of a full agenda tonight, we're considering this as a consent agenda from the Budget and Finance Committee. It's a unanimous consent agenda. And I can read through the details of the motions that we have before us.
Any objections to having this? No. Did anyone second to have that as a consent agenda?
Second.
Motion made by Council Memhard, seconded by Council Worthley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, nine to zero. Yep.
So, if you would like to review the details of any of these actions, they're all in our Zoom meeting from last Thursday night. But the first item was a memorandum from our health director requesting acceptance of a public health excellent grant, excellence grant in the amount of $600,000 for the two-year period of fiscal year 2026 and fiscal year 2027. The second item was a memorandum from our sustainability coordinator requesting acceptance of a Green Communities Competitive Grant for 2005 in the amount of $53,659. The third item was a memorandum from the environmental engineer requesting our acceptance of the dam and seawall grant from the EOEEA in the amount of $1 million. The fourth item was a memorandum from our police chief requesting acceptance of the fiscal year 2026 State 911 EMD grant in the amount of $40,945.55. And the fifth and final item for consideration from Budget and Finance was a memorandum from our General Counsel requesting a fiscal year 2025 invoice be paid with fiscal year 2026 funds from Veril LLC Law Firm in the amount of $35,865.50, and I so move.
I think, I think we already did it.
Yeah. So, unless there are any questions.
Council Gross.
I just want to make a quick comment about Number Three, which is the memorandum of the environmental engineer regarding the dam and seawall grant by the EOEEA in the amount of $1 million. This is exactly the kind of grant that we preserved through the 3A process and the 3A vote. And I just want people to understand that these are real dollars that impact our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
September 15th, Ordnance and Administration Standing Committee meeting.
There are no items under this heading.
September 17th, Planning and Development Standing Committee meeting.
Council Gross.
Thank you very much. We have two items. We have, the first one is a memorandum from the General Counsel regarding an easement request at 7 Atlantic Street over a city-owned parcel at 1 Atlantic Street. And I think we have City Solicitor Egan on the line to explain what this is all about.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the city council. This is a request for the city council to authorize the mayor to grant an easement to the property owners at 7 Atlantic Street across a city-owned parcel at 1 Atlantic Street. This is a matter that has been before the city as a request from this property owner since the 1970s. In the 1970s, the state and the city widened Atlantic Street, and there was a discussion, which you can see in your packet from the city council minutes, that the city council had determined that this easement should be given as an access easement. It was a request that was made. And then we have found no documents reflecting that grant of an easement. And the property owners have asked to perfect their title so that they will have a formal easement from the city so that they can access their property, access the Atlantic Street across the city of Gloucester property. When the road was widened, there were guardrails, and the access from 7 Atlantic Street was blocked to the street. And that's why they need this easement. Would be to answer any questions you may have.
No, we'll do the motion first. Then we'll have questions during discussion.
Okay. That's right. On a motion, Council Gross, seconded by Council Benson, Planning and Development Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council authorize the mayor to grant an access easement benefiting the property located at 7 Atlantic Street over a city-owned parcel of land located at 1 Atlantic Street in the approximate location of the existing accessway as described in the documents attached to the General Counsel's September 2, 2025 memorandum. And I so move.
Motion made by Council Gross, seconded by Council Gilman. Discussion.
Just on the motion, it's fairly straightforward. The piece of land that the city owns is almost completely wetlands, except for the small area that has access to this driveway and a little budding Atlantic Street. So, it's, we're not losing any particular use of the land itself. And, you know, given the fact that it's taken 50 years to get to a vote, I think, I think worth that point. We ought to, we ought to just wipe this off the docket for forever and a day.
More discussion.
Continue it and deliberate a little longer.
You got it. The motion, send it back to council.
Council Nolan.
So, this is actually kind of a weird situation. I know John Lyons. I know the property. There was property taken also from the resident in the house before that couldn't afford medical care in nursing home. The city did something, acquired the property in lieu of that. The property was sold. Counselor, well, John Lyons at the time, you know, was like, well, how do I access the property? And they had come up with this grant to do this. And basically, now John is 83 years old, and he just kind of wants to make this a permanent thing so he can transfer his property to his family and whatnot. He's a great guy. And he actually was a city councillor for six years. He's a really nice guy. And it's just, it's difficult. Like we said, like 50 years, this has been ending. It's almost embarrassing. But these things do happen. So, I do support this 100% tonight. And I want to thank PND for taking this up and working on this. This is a really good situation that you guys found an end to. And Suzanne Egan as well for her work.
Any more discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, nine to zero.
Second item on our agenda was Special Events Application Event 25-55, which was a request for street closures for the Gloucester Holiday Parade and Tree Lighting Ceremony on November 30, 2025, with a rain date of December 7, 2025. And this was, of course, unanimously approved by PND. So, Happy Christmas, happy all the things.
Good. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Scheduled public hearings. Public hearing 2025-43. Council Order 2025-40. Nolan Gross Memhard. Amend GCO Chapter 14 offenses and miscellaneous provisions by adding a new Article III, virtual currency kiosk prohibition, Section 14-18, purpose and intent, Section 14-19, effective date, Section 14-20, definitions, Section 14-21, virtual currency kiosk prohibited, Section 14-22, administration and enforcement, and Section 14-23, severability.
I will open the public hearing. And those who'd like to speak in favor? Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Paul Tucker, District Attorney. The office is 10 Federal Street in Salem. And thank you for the opportunity, Mr. President. I'm here with Scott Delay, our Chief Legal Counsel from the office, and Mike K. Feldman, who is our Chief of Communications. First, a big thank you to Mayor Verga and the council. You've really led the way on an issue that's caused us a lot of frustration and consternation in my three years as District Attorney so far. The leadership that you've shown, and I believe others will follow, is extraordinary. If you take a look just at the losses this year alone, statewide, it's about $77 million. In Essex County, we have $11 million that's been reported in losses to people who've been scammed. And I think that number is probably, in reality, higher. Because a lot of folks, when they find out that they've been scammed, are afraid to report it. Most often, it's somebody that's elderly and has taken this action without any other family members or anybody else knowing. These losses are extraordinary. I can tell you that we, in almost every day in our office, we've seen such sad stories. And when Council Nolan and President Gross and I had some early discussions later with Mayor Verga, I was very excited to see this. We've gone back and forth with so many organizations, and we're proud to partner with AARP for statewide ban. But that's pending, and it may take a little longer. I think what you're doing here tonight, if it's successful, you'll be the leader across the Commonwealth, taking this bold action. I'm a great believer that the city council is the closest governmental body to the people. You've listened. You've seen what has taken place here. And from my office and the folks that, from my office that have worked on this, we're extremely grateful for the action that you've taken here. Happy to support this. We jumped right on board the initiative that you've taken. I couldn't be more pleased about this. Thank you for being a leader on this. And as others follow, this will help to protect, particularly, our elderly population. We had one person that came in. First name is Becky from Salem. She's been very open about what happened to her. We did a public service announcement, put it on our social media page. This is a woman who worked for the state for 30 years, has a law degree, and lost $13,000. And she tells very haltingly about how where she's feeding cash into a Bitcoin machine in Salem in a gas station with a scammer on the phone. And she's saying to herself, I think I'm being scammed. This isn't right. This isn't right. But he was so persuasive, she ended up putting the entire amount in. This guy even told her what to tell the bank teller as she was withdrawing the money. Those stories are replicated 100 times a day across the Commonwealth. It's not overstating it to say this is an epidemic. I applaud you for taking such strong action if this is able to pass tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Egan, would you like to speak on this matter?
Yes, thank you, Council President. As, as we discussed at the ONA meeting, this was a request from Counselor Gross, Counselor Nolan, and Counselor Memhard to work on this ordinance. We did, we did use the model bylaw that the Essex County District Attorney's Office provided, which was very helpful. I also spoke with Scott Delay from the District Attorney's Office. And so, what is crafted before you tonight And so what is crafted before you tonight will work and is, will work to prohibit Bitcoins from operating within the city of Gloucester. This council already passed this as an exist, as a emergency measure. And so tonight, the ordinance that you'll be adopting will solidify that ordinance and create it as a permanent ordinance.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Communications, Madam Clerk.
There are none.
Do we have any questions from the councilors or either District Attorney Tucker or our legal counsel?
What question?
Council Worthley.
At the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, there was something about change that we have to have for the council meeting in terms of the date that this would start. There's a 30-day window after it passes and we couldn't use the date that we had before that. Has that been addressed?
It's in the, on the template that the emergency order is in effect.
At committee level, we said we had to change it to something else. Okay. And then is there a way to waive the 30-day implementation period so we could start it sooner?
Well, we put it in the emergency, so the emergency measure supersedes this. This allows it to, we're covered for 60 days under the emergency measure, to fill the gap of the 30 days that this has.
I think the charter says unless a new council order is introduced the proper way. So I wonder if this creates a window.
This is a, this is a council order that's put in.
It would replace the emergency one.
No, this does not replace the emergency one. I mean, it will eventually. When the emergency one times out, when the emergency one times out, this will be in place.
If I recall, it says, or unless another order comes in and replaces. So this would supersede that emergency order. But I don't want to have this gap at the period of time.
Except for there was not, I think the emergency order stays in effect.
Can I suggest we have Suzanne Egan weigh in on this since we have our city solicitor?
Oh, we do have it in our packet. We have pursuant to Gloucester Code of Ordinances in the city charter. Ordinances go into effect a minimum of 30 days, 31 days after passage and cannot go into effect sooner than that, which is why this language needs to be removed. So we're removing that language.
Just a question of whether the emergency order still is in force.
And this ordinance is currently in effect under an emergency order which the City Council voted on September 9, 2025. So we're removing the, Section 14-19, correct? We're removing that out of this ordinance tonight. After the motion has been read.
I don't know what we're going to do about it if it is the case, but I just want to make sure we don't have a gap of time where people get impacted by this. It's the last section of 4-10. City Charter. Not going to be the whole thing. Emergency measure, blah, blah, blah. Or a measure adopted in conformity with the procedures used for measures generally is passed extending it. So this.
So we are just extending it.
So if we're extending it, then it's in place right away. It's not, we don't need the 30-day period.
Suzanne?
Yes, I could hear most of that discussion, but some of it I could not hear. So I think that, I think the issue that you would like me to address is whether or not there will be a gap in time when the prohibition against Bitcoin kiosk will be in effect. And if that's the question, there will not be a gap. The council adopted an emergency measure to have the proposed ordinance go into effect. And that was passed, that, and now you're adopting a ordinance that will go into effect and it will comply with the Code of Ordinances. It is not going into effect until 31 days after its passage. And in that interim, the emergency measure will still be in effect. Does that help to answer the question?
I just read, we need to extend the emergency, but if we're good, we all have the same understanding, then we can stop. Thank you.
Um, you want to, so I closed the public hearing, correct? Yep. So.
Already did, didn't I?
All right. Close it again. Council Nolan. Community recommendation, and do we want to waive the reading?
We can waive it or I can read it. Up to the will of the council. And read it.
I think it's important enough that we leave this.
If I stop, I will ask Counselor Memhard to step in because he's co-writer with Counselor Gross and he's got his hands full. So we'll start out with a community recommendation. Yep. On a motion by Counsel Grace, seconded by Counsel Majota, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the City Council amend the Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 14, offenses and miscellaneous provisions by adding a new Article III, virtual currency kiosk prohibition as follows. Chapter 14, Article III, virtual currency kiosk prohibition, Section 14-18, purpose and intent. The city of Gloucester Public Police Department and Essex County District Attorney Office reports that unregulated virtual currency kiosks are able to convert flat currency into fiat, I'm sorry, currency into virtual currency instantaneously and irreversibly, which exposes the most vulnerable of our citizens to unnecessary risks. The purpose of this article is to prohibit the installation, operation, and use of virtual currency kiosks within the city in an effort to protect our community. Section 14-19, effective date, God bless you. Due to the extreme risk of instantaneous and irreversible financial damage to the city's most vulnerable members, it must be necessary, it is necessary for this measure to be effective immediately upon enactment. Section 14 through 20 definitions. A, virtual currency, a digital representation of value used as medium of exchange, a unit account of store value, but does not have legal tender status as recognized by the United States government, include but not limited to Bitcoin, Bitcoin Cash, Dash, Litecoin, Ripple, Zcash, Ethereum, and similar blockchain-based tokens. B, virtual currency kiosk means any self-service kiosk, machine, or device in a public accessible location that enables users to buy, sell, exchange, or transfer virtual currency to the machine using cash, debit card, credit card, or any of the means for payment of virtual currency. Section 14-21, virtual currency kiosk prohibited. It shall be unlawful for any person or entity to host, allow, or operate, permit, locate, or place a virtual currency kiosk within the city of Gloucester. All virtual kiosks existing within the city, as in the effective date of this ordinance must be removed within 30 days after the effective date. Section 14-22, administration and enforcement. This section shall be enforced by the police department. B, this section shall be enforced through any lawful means, included but not limited to noncriminal disposition pursuant to mass general law, Chapter 40, Section 21D. In the event of such disposition and subject to the safeguard, Section 21D, any business or individual that violates any provision of this article shall be subject to a fine of $300 for each violation. C, each day that the violation continues to operate, the virtual currency kiosk shall continue to separate violation of this article. Constitute, sorry. D, fines are cumulative at each day, a portion therefore shall constitute a separate offense. If more than one violation occurs, each condition violated shall be constitute a separate offense. Scott, you're up. I'm on 125s. I need 150 or something. I have a.
Yeah. You did the lion's share. Thank you very much, Sean. So the Section 14 hyphen 23 severability in any provision, if any provision of this ordinance is held to be invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, such invalidity shall not affect the remaining provisions, which shall remain in full force and in effect. And we want to read the motion.
You have to move that one first.
And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Council Memhard, seconded by Counsel Worthley.
Counsel.
Motion to amend?
No, I have a friendly amendment, please. There was a word that was eliminated or not stated in Part B, virtual currency kiosk. After device, it should say installed. Friendly amendment, not a big deal, but it was eliminated.
From where?
It was not read. It was not read. That's it.
Oh, okay.
Friendly amendment, just wanted to, so.
Amendment? Counsel Memhard? Counsel Worthley? Okay. Okay. Now you want to make a motion to amend? Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Oh, that's true.
Amendment comes first.
Yeah, don't do the main motion until the amendments.
Right. Have to vote on the amendment first.
Okay.
The amendment would be reading B again. Move to delete Section 14-19, effective date in its entirety, the renumbered subsequent subjections. Note, pursuant to the Gloucester Code of Ordinances in the city charter, ordinance is going to effect a minimum of 31 days after passage and cannot go in effect sooner than that which is why this language needs to be removed. This ordinance is currently in effect under an emergency order with the City Council voted on September 9, 2025, and I so move.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Counsel Nolan, seconded by Counsel Majota on the amendment. Discussion. Just on the amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it nine to zero. Now we're back to the main motion, discussion. Main motion as amended. Counsel Nolan.
All right. I don't need my glasses for this. Sorry. Kind of embarrassed too because Paul's like kind of, I respect him. This came to me from Lieutenant Mike Gossem in the beginning, from the Gloucester Police Department. And people in our city were getting scammed and to a tune of a lot of money. And when we started looking at what was going on and how it was going to happen, there was a few pieces of information that came up. One, there was some money and some checks that were able to take back into custody of the police department through fraud, but they couldn't return the money back because there was no means of who owned the money. Is that correct, Paul? Okay. So I immediately contacted Paul on this to find out where he stood and what was going on. I then spoke with Ed Conley and Chief Ed Conley was in the same boat. Then this went to the mayor's office through Greg Berger and Suzanne. Then I reached out to Tony Gross and Scott Memhard to work on this. It was something that you'll, a lot of thought and a lot of train, and a lot of communication. It bounced through these three people right here that are here tonight and Scott as well, even though you're there. But it was a collaborative between Suzanne Egan, the city of Gloucester, the council, and the police department, try to find a way of keeping our most vulnerable safe. And I felt as though this wasn't something that we should be waiting for a state resolution. Scott and Tony felt the same way. There's been a lot of issues. We jumped on it. It's been 10 years I've been on this council. I've done a lot of things I'm proud of. This one right here, you know, hits home. And it really makes me feel good to know that we're going to make a difference. And there's going to be some people that are upset about losing their Bitcoin machine. But to me, I can sleep better knowing that at night, people aren't going to be able to be scammed by these machines. If you go to the bank and you try to make a withdrawal and the tellers, you know, whether it be Western Union or Cape Ann Samson's Bank, they're trained to ask questions, you know? Why are you pulling this money out of the bank? What are you going to do with it? Does your family know? Is everything all right? Do you know exactly what you're doing? But when someone is convinced and, I don't want to say gullible, but our elderly are responsible. Usually when they get told they owe money, they, they want to pay it. And they may get something in the mail and they may say, well, it came in the mail, you know, this, this has to be true, something, I must have done something. And whether it's $5 or $20,000, it's a lot of money for someone living on a fixed income. And that's what people prey on. They prey on the honest people that are living in our own communities and communities abroad that are going to do the right thing because they think it's the right thing, even though it's the wrong thing. And this bill here, I think, is going to make a difference in whether it be your aunts, your uncles, your grandparents, your neighbors, or anybody not having that secondary effect where they can get screwed. Sorry for using that word, but that's exactly what it is. Because once they do it, it's gone. The money is no longer available. It's not there no more. And I can't thank Paul Tucker, his office, our administration, Suzanne Egan, Tony Gross, and Scott Memhard for joining me in this because I think this is a very important part of legislation that I hope will spread through the state and this country like wildfire to make sure that people are safe and secure financially, one more tool to keep them from getting scammed by losers. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Worthley.
Yes. First, thank you to Counsel Nolan. Right, so Lieutenant Gossem brought it to your attention and you put this in action. And I appreciate that you're giving kudos to everybody else, including the District Attorney's Office, the mayor's office, Suzanne Egan, and the councils. But you led the charge. You shepherded this through both as an emergency and then the referral to the Orders Administration Committee and Budget and Finance to get to this point. So you made a difference really fast and you should be given a lot of credit for doing this. So thank you. I also want to thank District Attorney Paul Tucker and his staff. And I have to mention this because I can. Every time Paul Tucker speaks, I learn something, going back all the way 30 years ago when he was my teacher at Salem State College in criminal justice. And I think he worked with my grandfather in the North Shore Regional Drug Task Force. But we're not often in the same place at the same time. So I just wanted to draw our attention to how young we are and having worked together for over 30 years. The last thing I want to say is, I said this two weeks ago, I said at the committee level, even though this doesn't go into effect for 30 days after the 30-day waiting period, 31-day waiting period, if we can, what's that?
Effective, there's no gap. That emergency measure was strictly speaking, I read it, it was strictly speaking about emergency measures. It was not speaking about the ordinances. It was talking about a superseding emergency measure. It was talking about emergency measures only.
Okay. So this current one doesn't go into effect for 60 days, 30 days after, but the other one's still in effect. Right. Either way, instead of asking the two property owners who have these to read the minutes of the City Council meeting, to look at yesterday's newspaper to see what one of the advertisement was, can we ask the mayor's office, building inspector, police department, just to make a phone call? I left a message for one.
And asked, so the police department is on it.
Right. Instead of having, you know, 30 days, oh, you get.
Yeah, no, the police department's on notification.
Because these people don't want, even if they're getting rent, they don't want problems either. So I think communication will be helpful. So everyone did good work. Thank you, and I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Counsel Grace.
Thank you. Yeah, just to kind of pay back on something that Sean said about, I worked in banking for many years in Boston and we were absolutely trained to recognize the signs when people were coming in. And, you know, I interceded many times. And now the level of crime, the sophistication, there's no more human that can step in and intercede and try to prevent somebody from, you know, taking a great loss. So I think this is an extraordinarily important move that we're taking and I'm very, very proud of the city for doing it. Thank you.
Counsel Gillman.
As the ex-official member of the council on aging, on behalf of our seniors, thank you so much for taking the initiative to make this happen. Counsel Nolan, your leadership, rest of the councilors that helped. Memhard, Gross, thank you so much for doing this and for the assistance from our wonderful friend, Paul Tucker. Thank you and his team. Thank you.
I would, I would just like to say, you know, thank you to the cosponsors. Thank you to Sean for bringing this to a. I would, I would just like to say, you know, thank you to the co-sponsors, thank you to Sean for bringing this to our attention, and this was really a fantastic cooperative effort with the DA's office. It was a pleasure to work with them, they were very instrumental in helping guide us with the language, and I look forward to, uh, to more collaboration on, on things that are so, so necessary, because today's world can be kind of dangerous out there, and we really need to help our, our citizens the best we can. Dylan?
Thank you, um, I know you don't like calling on me, but.
I do.
I know, I'm teasing you, I'm teasing you.
Your hand was invisible.
I know, I'm teasing, you know, I'm teasing you as you tease me, but, uh, but anyway, I want to just first, uh, as, as many of my fellow counselors said, commend both you, Sean, and Scott, and also, um, the solicitor and the mayor as well for bringing this forward and making this possible. And this is something that we are combating, that not just, we're not just helping our seniors, but the activity that's involved in this, this is involving illicit activity, this money could go to drug trafficking, other things that I've, was, I was reading earlier, and I'm, I'm seeing correct, I'm correct on that. So that we are, we are helping, and as I spoke to, um, Scott Delay, who I know from my time working in Beverly, talking about that we are leading the way on this in the whole city, and, um, the whole state, rather. So hopefully we can continue, this will be momentum for state action, and really, we are gonna be hopefully, um, moving forward on this in ways, um, as well, so thank you.
Thank you, and, thank you, Council Dylan. I, I was remiss in thanking, um, Suzanne Egan, our city solicitor, and the mayor's office for their help and guidance through this also, um, couldn't have done it without Suzanne Egan for sure. Are we ready for a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it, nine to zero. Thank you, Paul and team. Yes, thank you very much, thank you for coming to our fair city this evening. We'll see you again soon, I'm sure. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing twenty twenty-five dash forty-four, council order twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three, Grace, amend GCO chapter twenty-two, traffic in motor vehicles, section twenty-two dash two sixty-five, turning movements generally by adding Kent Circle at its intersection with Western Avenue, right turn only.
I'll open the public hearing. Those who'd like to speak in favor?
Am I up?
I guess you are, Council Grace.
Thank you, so this was brought forward, um, because of the, the ever-increasing incidents where people are taking a left turn from Kent Circle onto Western Ave, and, um, trying to circumvent the traffic that accumulates down where Essex Ave meets Western Ave. And it has many times, and I've had photographs sent to me, and I've discussed this at length with Council Nolan, where, um, people are just kind of blocking the road with their cars, um, because of their impatience to, um, you know, to get out and try to beat some of the bridge traffic. So, you know, it's a small measure to try to make things a little bit better, um, to, in all honesty, it's not one that I particularly like. I take that left-hand turn all the time, um, but in the entrance, and, you know, the, um, interest of public safety and trying to alleviate, um, the near misses and the, the backup that happens down there, um, it is one small step to try to make things better. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak in favor? No hands? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Come on up.
Hi again, my name's Zorba Kinnixine, I live on Western Ave, five ninety-four Western Ave. I drive through this intersection twice a day, every day. This will not make it safer. What we need to do is make Kent Circle two-way. The reason, I'm sorry? The reason that the backup is happening is because it is so difficult to pull from one thirty-three onto Western Ave. Because now, not only do you have the traffic coming at you, you have cars that are blocking you from now making your left turn onto Western Ave, because they're going from Western Ave to one thirty-three. Before, when you could cut up Kent Circle, you didn't have that interaction. The city owns the property that abuts the left side of Kent Circle. All that has to happen is the road has to be widened a few feet, make that two-way, and you have half as much traffic going, you know, to make that pull-out harder, and now it's easier to pull out, now you don't have as much of a backup, and then naturally, you won't have people making that left turn, because it's not backed up this crazy amount. Like, I, I feel like I'm taking my hands and my life, and I'm just going straight down Western Ave, I have people coming at me from both sides, and I think the solution should be for all of Gloucester, and not for the five houses on Kent Circle who want to have it a one-way to be able to park. They can still park, the city owns the land, we can just widen that road, make it two-way, make it safer for everybody. It would be better for everybody, and then if the ro, end of the road is widened a little bit more, it's no longer dangerous to make a left-hand turn, because you can see now, because there's a wider opening, so it's just a normal left-hand turn onto the street, instead of a turn where you're, I know what you're talking about, you almost have to like hit the car that's parked to make that turn around, but since the city owns the property, you widen that road, you make it two-way, at the very end, you can make a safe left then, that wouldn't be an issue, and then you could fix a lot of the danger of driving in and out of Gloucester down Western Ave. So, I, I, in theory, I think it's a good idea, but I feel like it would be easy to ignore, hard to enforce, and it doesn't really make that greatly safer, whereas making it two-way, I feel like, would make it a lot safer, that's just my feedback, thank you.
Thank you.
Do I speak in opposition? In opposition? Come on up. Name and address for the record. Oh, wait till you get there.
Hi, um, I'm John Orlando, I live at seventy-one Western Avenue. I'll, I, he took my speech, okay? So I'm just gonna add to that, Marjorie, if, instead of, instead of voting for this tonight, okay? Maybe turn it back to the Traffic Commission. There, there really needs to be a bit of an over, uh, overhaul of that area. Um, I travel probably twice as much as, as Zorba does, um, and I run into exactly the same problem. We're all trying to get on Western Avenue from Essex Avenue, and it is a living nightmare, especially with the cars that are coming up on the wrong side of the street to make the left turn to go out of town up one thirty-three. This really isn't gonna make it safer, it might possibly make it worse. So I just wanna ditto what Zorba's, and, and add, add ju, just that small amount. It really needs an overhaul. There are probably six people that send me here tonight to basically said what we're saying.
You know, you know, and the whole pos, purpose of this is to get.
I'm sorry, Marjorie.
The purpose of this is to get the dialogue going, to see what we can do, so thank you.
That, that's great, that's, that's all we can ask, thank you.
Okay, anyone else to speak in opposition? Okay, communications?
There are none.
Questions?
Thank you.
I can find it.
Questions from counselors? Council Grow?
Yeah, I have two questions, and, and I, I put this out here, because I, I thought about them today. One is, uh, are we risking doing this, a, um, situation where we're creating more of a problem with people doing U-turns up by Stage Four Park and trying to pull into the Stage Four Park and back out so that they can, they can make that left turn legally? Um, and secondly, I, I, having, uh, heard Mr. Kinnixine's, um, uh, comments, I wonder if the consideration has been made to make it two-way and remove the parking, um, on the street parking there, to, we wouldn't then have to widen the street, um, and whether or not that's been considered, and, and maybe his suggestion, or John Orlando's suggestion, we send this back to, uh, to committee, might be a wise idea. Uh, we seem to kind of, I'm, and, and I want to say thank you to bringing this forward. But I think we tend to kind of hit little bits of things over and over again, until we've created something that becomes prob, more and more problematic. And I think maybe the, the opportunity to do this right more time.
There's a question here?
Yeah, that's the question, the question is, should we do this?
Any more questions? Close of public hearing? Many recommendation?
On a motion by Council Majota, seconded by Council Grace, the Orders Administration Committee voted three in favors. You are opposed, recommend the city council amend the Gloucester Code of Ordinance, chapter twenty-two, traffic in motor vehicles, section twenty-two dash two sixty-five, turning movements generally by adding Kent Circle at its intersection with Western Avenue, right turn only. Further ordered, the city council forward a letter to Mass DOT requesting that Kent Circle at its intersection with Western Avenue may be right turn only, and that such letter be accompanied by certificate of vote of the city council. Further ordered, that this amendment to the Gloucester Code of Ordinance will go into effect once approval for Mass DOT is received. An ISO move.
Motion made by Council Nolan, seconded by Council Majota, discussion. Council Nolan?
This is something that's been going on for a long time, uh, Steve Blank brought this up. We have had two-way traffic with one-way parking at that intersection for years, without incident. We have five houses on this, this parcel of street. Each one of these houses has a full driveway, they have a rare road and rare driveways. I would like to make an amendment to this ordinance that we change this to no parking, two-way directions of traffic on Kent Circle. It, it's, it's a mess, it's been a mess for ten years, or nine years now since Council Blank did this. When he first did it, the actual Traffic Commission and the state had originally said they wanted to go the other way. All right, and the neighbors wanted to go the way that it is now, and it went through the council. Through these years, living in Magnolia, driving down Western Avenue, constantly, because if I'm out on a Saturday, if the bridge is up, it doesn't bother me. We live in Gloucester, it's beautiful, I love looking at the harbor and the boats coming in and out. But what I do see constantly, are cars passing me on the wrong side of the road, racing for four hundred feet past the World War Two Memorial to get to Essex Avenue to be able to turn left, because they can't go down Kent Road, the Kent Circle. Then, when Kent Circle is full, or people rushing, and the whole thing was safety, was the, the idea of these people, these five houses. But now you have people that race down Kent Circle from Essex Avenue, going as fast as they can to try to make a left-hand turn, so they can get ahead of the people on Western Avenue to beat Essex Avenue. And then if they can't get out of Kent Circle onto Western Ave, they'll block the intersection, hoping someone lets them in, and when the bridge finally goes down, people are trying to come, and the traffic can't go. So, I, I'll say it, in this five houses versus the entire city of Gloucester, that had a throughway through both sides that worked, that I'm sorry for you, but I would like to make a motion to change it to no parking on Kent Circle, both-way traffic, an ISO move.
Second.
Motion made by Council Nolan, seconded by Counselor Grace.
May I ask a point of order? Do we have to re-advertise this because it's a different ordinance that we're changing?
Council Worthley?
I was gonna make that point, that, first of all, I would love to see that, but to introduce that at this point, we're going through the process on a very different or, it's so different than left here and turn right here and turn only, we're talking about two-way traffic, moving parking, there is a process we gotta go through. So I love it, but it's gotta come in as a second, separate order.
So, we can, um, we can send it back to O N A, but it probably will be, have to be re, re, um, re-advertised.
We send it back to O N A, we're just gonna send right here and turn only back to O N A. We're not sending two-way traffic and no parking, we're, we're sending the council order back, so that's all that O N A can work on. It would need to be withdrawn.
It has to be withdrawn? Or, Council Benson?
I think the best approach would be to re, based on what I'm hearing here, and understanding processes, that it would be best to, if that's the way you want to go, is to with, to withdraw it, and then at the next meeting, resubmit it as a new order, and then put it, refer, and then when it comes to us in that first October meeting, submit it to, um, it will be referred to O N A. I think that's the best process, since we're talking about public, we're gonna be, we're gonna be advertising it for public hearing. I think that's the best approach, just for process, and it's, it's clear-cut, um, that's just my, my, uh, two cents. I know most people don't want to hear my two cents, but I'm just kidding.
No, I make a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Hold on, hold on, there's a motion on the table, but Council Nolan, we gotta withdraw that one first.
Right.
I will withdraw my motion to be set forward for a future date.
Secondary.
Oh, you can just withdraw, you don't have to vote on it. Marjorie? You're gonna eat now the main motion.
Okay, I make a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Second.
Okay, one thing I would like to, if this comes before us, because we have so many, and it's, it's, it's talked like it's easy and cheap to widen a road. We need to have a, uh, a money, a, a component added to this, if there's any discussion of widening this road.
I didn't mention widen the road, I know, in any aspects. I can tell you that the pole at the corner of Western Avenue and Kent Circle, as of seven months ago, the fee was ten thousand dollars to move a pole, all right? Then you have curbing and paving. The fact of the matter is that I believe there should be zero expense, move ahead with no parking, two-way access, it doesn't cost a taxpayer, and it services the entire city.
Agreed.
Okay, so the mo, it has been, so I don't think we need, I don't think we need a motion to have withdrawn, do we? You can just withdraw. Well, we can do a motion to withdraw, but I don't think we need it, since Grace is not here. Well, um, so, Marjorie made the motion to withdraw. Counselor Worthley, um, amend, uh, seconded it? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it, nine to zero. Okay. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing twenty twenty-five dash forty-five, council order twenty twenty-five dash thirty-four, Grace, amend GCO chapter twenty-two, traffic in motor vehicles, section twenty-two dash two seventy, parking prohibited at all times, and section twenty-two dash two ninety-one, tow-away zones regarding Widmore Street, Curtis Square, and Washington Street.
Council Grace?
Should I say why first, or just give my?
You can, this is a, a referral back with, I don't know, with.
Um, I move to refer the council order CC number twenty twenty-five dash zero three four, amending Gloucester Code of Ordinance, is chapter twenty-two, traffic in motor vehicles, section twenty-two dash two seven oh, parking prohibited at all times, and section twenty-two dash two nine one, tow-away zones, RE, Widmore Street, Curtis Square, and Washington Street, back to the ordinance and administration, standing committee for, for the review.
Second.
Motion made by Council Grace, seconded by Counselor Grow, but she didn't let her say an ISO move.
So move.
Don't waste time, though.
So, discussion, Council Grace, would you like to say something?
First of all, I want to thank you for being so patient and waiting here tonight. Um, the reason that this is being sent back to, or requesting that it be sent back to, um, Ordinance Administration is that, um, today we received additional, um, an additional letter that was sent in in the appropriate time to be put into public record, but due to some glitch somewhere or other, it did not arrive. It just was sent back to the constituent. Um, I feel it's important for everybody to have their voice heard, and I think that this individual deserves a right to have his opinion put into public record. Um, secondly, there was some other, um, information that was giving, but, given to me today by way of maps. Secondly, there was some other information that was given to me today by way of maps that needs to be studied and addressed, and I think the best way to handle this is to go back to the ordinance and administration subcommittee to discuss the merits of this and to work on the best way to make this best-case scenario for the entire neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion? Council Benson.
I just want to quickly, just for fifty seconds, if I may, just to give Council Grace, just, I know how difficult and how challenging is being a ward council and putting forward all of these things, and the work that you're putting forward on these things, hearing from constituents. It's a lot, and I commend you for all the work that you're doing. Of course. And I know it's not easy.
Seventeen seconds. You're yielding your time now. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing twenty twenty-five dash forty-six, council order twenty twenty-five dash thirty-five, Worthley. Amend GCO chapter twenty-two, traffic and motor vehicles, section twenty-two dash two seventy, parking prohibited at all times, and section twenty-two dash two ninety-one, tow-away zones regarding Washington Street and Orchard Street.
I'll open the public hearing. Speaking in favor, Council Worthley.
Yes, thank you. Couple of months ago, I got a message from, I think it's Darlene Foot, who works at Sebastian's. And whenever a member of the Foot family is asking for city council action on parking and traffic, pay attention, just for Gus Foot's long history of working on these issues. But I consulted with the owner of the property, Michael Orlando, and here's what's happening right now. There is no parking allowed in front of Sebastian's, yet people are parking there all day. On one hand, we could say, let's get the police involved to enforce it, but the police have a lot on their hands, especially in the summertime, four cruisers, sixteenth largest city in the state of Massachusetts, they're not gonna get there every time. So these cars are parking there all day. And they would like to see this business owner, we have a communication from them, I think, did everyone receive the email that was sent from the property owner? Yeah, okay. So, what they'd like to see is a spot that makes it available for fifteen-minute parking. As you know, Sebastian's Pizza doesn't really have a sort of sit-down restaurant, it's pretty, I mean, there's one or two tables, but it's mainly takeout place. What's happening is people are parking further away, crossing the street, trying to get there, parking on Orchard Street, running in, this should make it safer because there'll be a spot in front. And initially, I didn't think there was enough space, but Bob Ryan from the Traffic Commission went out there, measured it. He determined there's room for this. The Traffic Commission voted three to nothing, I'm sorry, unanimously for it. Ordinance Administration Committee voted unanimously for it. We provided pictures in the packets, I hope everyone saw those as well. And the business owner supports it, we have that in writing. I support it, I think the various subcommittee and Traffic Commission support it, so I think a fifteen-minute parking space is good for business, it's good for public safety, and there's room for this. So, that's why I put it forward. I always forget where wards two and three split this, so I should have consulted with each of you, but I can't remember.
One part of the street is my ward, and then the other part is, it's kind of zigzagged, the same.
I apologize for not involving you, but I think we've.
No, it's not my ward, so it's Marjorie's ward, but anyway.
So, that's the presentation, and I'll be happy to answer your questions when it gets to that point.
Anyone else speak in favor? Bring her in. For him. You're up, Kristen. Unmute. Unmute your mic. Can't hear you because you are still muted. Took her hand down.
There's a mute button on the bottom left, right?
Took her hand down, so. Anyone else like to speak in favor? All right, anyone to speak in opposition? No, do we have any communications?
Received one by email in favor.
Okay. And do we have questions from the counselors? Council Majota.
We talked about the Sinois O N A budget, it is fifteen-minute parking, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, correct?
Unless we put provisions on it, otherwise.
Otherwise, so no overnight parking as is.
I missed the O N A meeting, but yeah. I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to adding a period of time. Business day, sort of thing, let people park there at night.
Any more questions from the counselors? Close of public hearing? Would you like to read the motion, please, Council Nolan?
On a motion by Council Majota, seconded by Council Grace, the ordinance administration committee voted three in favors, you are opposed, recommend the city council amend the Gloucester Code of Ordinance's chapter twenty-two, traffic and motor vehicles, section twenty-two, two seventy, parking prohibited at all times by deleting Washington Street, Westerly Side from its intersection with Orchard Street from a distance of one hundred and sixty-five feet in a southerly direction. And add in Washington Street on a Westerly Side from its intersection with Orchard Street for a distance of one hundred and thirty feet in a southerly direction. Amend chapter twenty-two, traffic and motor vehicles, section twenty-two, two ninety-one, tow-away zones by add in Washington Street on a Westerly Side from its intersection with Orchard Street for a distance of one hundred and thirty feet in a southerly direction. Amend chapter twenty-two, traffic and motor vehicles, section twenty-two dash two eighty, fifteen-minute parking by add in Washington Street on a Westerly Side, beginning at a point of one hundred and thirty feet from its intersection with Orchard Street in a southerly direction, two spaces. An iso move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Nolan, seconded by Council Majota. Discussion. Council Row.
I'm sorry, I should have asked these questions earlier, but just reading the motion again, I'm confused about where the no parking zone is supposed to be going, and why we're putting in two spaces, one hundred and thirty feet from the intersection of Orchard Street, which is one hundred and thirty feet from the location of the restaurant that seems to be being serviced by this, so I'm a little confused by the location here.
Council Worthley.
Thank you. Do we have the photos from the original? I submitted pictures too.
Those photos, there was a photo that you submitted earlier that was just a.
Very beginning, I don't know if it got through this, in this packet, but. So we're not adding no parking, we're deleting no parking. It's basically, it's a, taking away a negative, right, we're deleting no parking, but we're adding parking spaces. The two spots we're adding are fifteen-minute parking spots. As far as the dimensions that we measured, Washington Street, Westerly Side, beginning at a point, one hundred and thirty feet from its intersection with Orchard Street, in a southerly direction for two spaces. And so, Orchard Street, and then one hundred and thirty feet.
Again, if I read the motion, maybe I might be missing something. I see where we're deleting Washington Street, Westerly Side, from its intersection with Orchard Street for a distance of one hundred and sixty-five feet in a southerly direction, and adding Washington Street, Westerly Side, from its intersection with Orchard Street for a distance of one hundred and thirty feet in a southerly direction. It looks like we've just shortened the no parking zone by thirty-five feet, but it still is. No. So where are we eliminating the no parking zone?
Oh, go, okay, stay right there.
Isn't Sebastian's?
It's on the corner of Orchard and Washington Street.
So it would be helpful for me to point to what we're talking about on the screen?
But I guess the first question I have is, are you saying that we're deleting no parking, but the motion specifically says it's adding no parking, thirty-five feet less than the amount that was in the original ordinance? So I'm curious where we're adding parking. And secondly, I'm curious why we're adding two fifteen-minute spaces. There is a fifteen-minute zone on Orchard Street already for this.
No, I'm sorry, sir.
I understand, I understand, but it's okay, I appreciate that, but basically, the way that this is written, that doesn't say what it's trying to say, I think.
Council Grace, did you?
I was at that Traffic Commission meeting, and what it was, is they did their measurements to make sure that there was enough width in the road itself to be able to allow parking, which is why you're deleting the one sixty-five and then adding back the one thirty, so that it adds down at the point in the road by the Mother of Grace Club where it's wide enough, or as deemed wide enough by the Traffic Commission to add the two spots in there. That was their reasoning.
So that these parking spaces are not in front of Sebastian's?
In front of Sebastian's is less than, is less than twenty feet from the intersection, so by law, it's no parking.
Okay, so we're really just shortening the no parking zone and adding two fifteen-minute spaces. So that business effectively will have three fifteen-minute spaces at its disposal.
But they're not in front of the business. They're in front of the Mother and Grace Club.
Does the Mother of Grace Club need fifteen-minute parking?
Parking isn't for any entity, obviously it's convenient if it's near the place that's asking for it, but anybody could park there for fifteen minutes, whether they go to the Mother of Grace Club, or Sebastian's, go to.
Taco Slapita.
Taco Slapita.
I appreciate that, but also, there's fifteen-minute parking in front of Taco Slapita. I just don't know that we need that many fifteen-minute zones in that short block. That would be four in that zone, I'm just questioning whether or not that's necessary, and it's far enough away from Sebastian's, to be honest with you.
All right. Council Nolan.
All right, so. I'm gonna have to give you a clip-on. We've been talking about this for a little bit at O N A, and Jeff went out and got measurements, the Traffic Commission has gotten measurements as well. I did two real-time studies of my own, where I actually parked there. And the issue that I have is that the difficulty of opening the door of my truck with traffic coming. Right, it's that tight. That it made me think that we could be opening up something where someone's gonna get hurt because they're gonna get out of their car thinking like it's Main Street, where they park their door, and they open it up, and they're not paying attention. We're talking one or two feet around the safety zone. And if someone, like this particular car crossing, they're probably five or six feet from the side of the road. If you put a full-size pickup truck on the right-hand side in front of Sebastian's or the Mother of Grace Club, where it's actually a little tighter by the Lipitos and the Mother of Grace, that you may be putting someone in danger of opening the door, causing an accident, and getting hit. I love Sebastian's Pizza, I can only have it once in a while, because I'm a diabetic. And I feel for them, but I can't, in good conscience of my own mind and safety, after doing my own driving there, breaking the law to see what it would be like for a person in a full-size pickup. And it doesn't work. So, I myself, I can't support this tonight. I do like Mike, and I understand the business, but I do see the opening up a wave of something that could be an issue. I just, in real time, sitting there, going there on a Saturday afternoon, it's tight. Now, it's tight down by Scaalfani's, but it's not as tight, you're talking three more feet. And that could be the difference in what I see. But when I parked there myself, my own truck, I had to put my mirrors in, A, so they wouldn't get hit, and then you can't open the door because you can't look to see what's coming through your mirror, so you're looking over your shoulder and trying to see what's coming on and going on. And I think for the benefit of having two twenty-two-foot spots for fifteen minutes isn't worth the risk of danger of someone getting hurt or involved in an accident for that short amount of span. I believe it's twenty-nine feet and twenty-seven feet running back and forth between curb to curb in that section. It's just not, it's on the border of twenty-two, I forget, was it one eighty, where you have to have ten feet of working room between passing vehicles, and then it's automatically illegal to park there. So it's very close, and I feel bad for them. It's been an existing business for a long time. I just, in my mind, for safety reasons, I think it's opening up a can of worms. And that's how I feel about it. I'm sorry, Jeff, you put a lot of time into this tonight, and you did all your measurements and everything with due diligence. The Traffic Commission did too. This is just my opinion on how I feel about it, after going there two weekends in a row, to see what happens. Thank you.
The President?
Council Worthley.
Thank you. Council Nolan, thank you for doing a real-time experiment on what it would look like if there were fifteen-minute parking. I certainly do not want to put anybody at risk, obviously, public safety is number one. I wonder a couple of things. Firstly, even though there's currently no parking, there's oftentimes cars that are parked there. Right, I know it's an enforcement, we can't do enforcement, we also can't expect that the police are going to just suddenly have more men, women available to do that. So the cars are parking there anyway already, all day. So this isn't a question of a parking spot versus a fifteen-minute, this is a no parking where someone parks there all day versus someone's gonna park there for fifteen minutes. So now the difference is more people getting out more often, but it's no different than having a car or a truck there. When this first came to me as an idea, I didn't think it was wide enough, and as you know, Traffic Commission member Bob Ryan is very particular about making sure it's safe. And he went there, measured, he said, technically, there's enough room. Just a little further, because it was further back, it wouldn't be enough, but he said there's enough room. I wonder if we were to potentially amend this to, say, compact cars only, if that would change your opinion? Because you have a pretty large truck. And you think if it were a smaller vehicle, it would see the same issue.
This isn't a back-and-forth, this is discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were in questions, actually.
No, our public hearing is closed. This is discussion.
Okay. So, my challenge is, if there were no parking there, and we're adding a parking spot, then, because you're adding risk. There's no parking, but people park there all day. Except when you pull up, there was a spot. So that's where it's sort of like, well, we're not taking away anything that's not any, it's just as unsafe.
If any other counselors like to speak. Council Dylan, met Counselor Benson.
Okay, I'm looking at it from like Google Maps, because this is not showing the full.
You have a map.
I do have a map, if you'd like me to show.
You have a map in your packet.
No, I know, but I'm looking at like the Google Maps with the little human.
Yeah, I know, that's.
But this is so much better.
It's in your packet.
But I know it's in, but this, it looks better on this. But, because you can move it around, I can't move it around on the packet, but.
Can he share the screen? Can he share a screen?
I don't. That's up to.
What?
I can if you want.
What's it gonna, I mean, we already have a picture of it, and a bird's-eye view.
Come on, this is gonna be a little bit better.
Yours is just, no, it isn't, it's a street view.
No, because look at this, look at this, look at this, Tony, look at this.
And what does it tell us?
Because, so, my point is.
It doesn't tell us anything.
It does, it does, because you could see it, right?
You're eliminating the bike lane.
Well, the bike lane doesn't, yeah, it doesn't really exist anymore, but, anyway, because this is an older thing, but my point is, is I can understand. because this is an older thing. But my point is, is I can understand where Sean is speaking to this is the, and I can tell you, speaking to constituents that I represent on Pine Street and in this area, the speeding is just, if people just are going down and a car opening up, it could, someone could lose their door just looking at, just seeing this. But my point is with this is I can, I can see where Sean is speaking to. It's just this road is tight, and then there's cars there. And obviously, this is an enforcement issue. But I also can understand the need for people to be parked, like especially people already parking there. So with that being said, is I definitely could be open to what you're saying of just compact cars.
That's not an area that we're discussing.
Further back.
Oh, it's further, okay.
Yeah, a lot further back. Keep going. There you go. Right there. That's where it is, where your cursor is. That's where it starts.
Okay. That, yes, and now, okay.
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 Thank you.
I made a great, I was, I was, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just, Google Maps was actually on my street today. So they're remapping Gloucester. FYI. Counselor Grow.
I'm gonna back up Counselor Nolan on this. I spent some time today watching the traffic in front of Sebastian's. And first off, I think that just because people are doing something wrong isn't a reason to change the rules so that they're not doing what's wrong, even though the fact is, is that if they're parking in front of Sebastian's now, they're going to continue parking in front of Sebastian's regardless of whether we change this ordinance to allow a 15-minute zone 100 feet away. So I don't think we're solving the issue of parking in front of Sebastian's. So I, and I've watched the traffic. I think if, if cars are parked there, they, the traffic that's coming down the road definitely needs to go out of the way and across the yellow line to pass those cars that are coming, or pass the parked cars. On Washington, on side streets, that may not be an issue. But on Washington Street, which is a major corridor, it's definitely an issue. And, you know, maybe we need to beef up enforcement. The picture that we saw has a car parked on Orchard Street that's illegally parked because there's a 15-minute zone just up, up, up from that. So I think in terms of the business itself, I think we have capacity for them to have people stop their cars, get out, and walk a far less distance than the Mother of Grace to get their pizza, and not jeopardize people on, on Washington Street. So I'm, I'm going to oppose this motion.
Counselor Worthley.
Thank you. I just want to make sure everyone's clear. When I proposed the idea, Bob Ryan found the spot on the street that was legally, there's legally enough room for cars passing, if there's cars parking below the size, and enough room. It's not right in front of Sebastian's because that is narrow. But you go further down the street, 130 feet or so, that's where he determined with a tape measure that it's legally, there's enough room to get by. And I do appreciate Counselor Nolan's truck and large mirrors you need to pull in. But that's what the Traffic Commission recommended, this spot, not right in front of Sebastian's, but where the street widens a little bit. I, I would like to consider making a motion, if, if we're allowed to, to consider compact cars only. That way, we're not dealing with oversized vehicles, and then maybe we could get something that would be palatable to the council. I guess the only way to find out is just put a motion on the table, right?
The motion?
Yeah, you want to make an amendment?
Yeah. So I'm making the assumption that compact cars also skinnier. I don't know if that's the case.
Are you gonna make an amendment?
But I make a motion to amend this, that in the two spaces, the two 15-minute spaces, that they would be for compact cars only, and I so move.
Motion's been made and seconded by, motion made by Counselor Worthley, seconded by Counselor Majota on the amendment. Discussion. Counselor Nolan.
On our books, a parking spot in Gloucester is defined by 22 feet. The width is standard between the compact size of 18 feet versus 22. So the spot would be marked out at the same width as a full-length vehicle, which would be in the way of the traffic as well. And also, in a highly bike-traveled area, you're talking about bicycles, doors, and all kinds of stuff. So the length is the only thing that changes between a compact spot and a full spot. In the city of Gloucester, it goes 22 feet to 18 feet. And I believe we only have one spot in the city of Gloucester, and it's on the corner of Maplewood in Cleveland, in front of the old Uncle Mo's. That's a compact spot. And that's 18 feet, but the width, which I can't, I don't know off the top of my head what the width is, the width doesn't change. So the compact car would not change what the marking would be from the 18, 15 inches from the curb versus where they park, and so on and so forth. It's only by the width is what's justified in Washington, 22 to 18.
President, on the motion.
Counselor Grow.
I think, I appreciate the effort here. But I think you're going to be adding one more unenforceable aspect to an already unenforced situation. I don't think, if we're not getting, if we're not getting parking enforcement, people who are parking there now, adding a condition that it be compact cars, I think is kind of a futile exercise in terms of more enforcement. And I think people will argue, hey, my car's compact, whatever. I mean, I think you're just not going to have anything meaningful come out of this that people will, will continue to illegally park when they're illegally parking.
I'm gonna weigh in. Do I need to take over? You need to call me out. So I too don't see, you don't, you don't abolish something because people aren't following the rules, because it, that just doesn't make sense. Adding layers of enforcement is also a very difficult thing to, to ask, because already we're having difficulty enforcing it. To add layers to that just also doesn't make any sense to me. This is a very tight area in Gloucester. You know, we, by removing this, we could have a, I don't know if there's a liability. I don't think Suzanne's still with us, because it's a public street. I'm not certain if there's a liability because we made the change. But that, that is a thought that I had. And it just, this is just such a tight area. While maybe it is feet, fits minimum requirements for the Traffic Commission, you cannot drive down there when there's cars parked there without crossing the yellow line. So it really is a, it's a concern to remove this. I have major concerns about that. Okay, I'm back. Counselor Benson.
Thank you. And since I correctly now know where the spot is, because people are saying, like, that's, that was confusing me. But anyway, this is like, the bane of my existence is the parking stuff. But I digress. What I will say is that, from what, what you were just alluding to, is the concern of liability is definitely there. And it is something that I wish the solicitor was on to speak to, because it could be. If we're approving this, and there was, and someone was injured, and this, there could be a liability, there could be something there. But I will not be supporting this based on just seeing where this is. And obviously, it is a very tight area, and people are speeding down it. Someone's opening their car door, or a car door could get hit.
We're on the amendment right now.
Okay, okay.
So a compact car.
Yeah, but with the compact car, my point is, is the compact car, it doesn't, it wouldn't make any difference based on what I'm hearing tonight. So, thank you.
Counselor Worthley.
On the amendment, the compact car, I just have this feeling that my car is skinnier than your truck, whether it's called compact or whatever. So if there's no difference in the regulations on what a compact car is, then it doesn't even make sense to, to do that. So I'd be happy to withdraw that motion without, I guess, with prejudice. I don't care. I'm not gonna bring that back.
We can vote on it. That's the way that it's been moved and seconded.
A compact car part? It's gonna fail, so just, I'm withdrawing it.
Yeah, we can withdraw it. Yeah, yep. The motion maker can withdraw.
So on the main motion?
So the, yep. So back to the main motion.
Yeah. So as everyone knows, Ward Council, that large council, this isn't always easy to make it all work, right? But I'm hearing comments about enforceability. We don't control enforceability. Okay? And then this idea that, well, if they're breaking the law already, that's not a reason to do it. The reason to do this was a request from an employee at Sebastian's wanting 15-minute parking because their customers can't find a place to park quickly. That's the reason to do it. This isn't, oh, they're breaking the law, everybody will just do it. The point is, there are cars that are parked there that are not getting hit, they're not having mirrors taken off, there's been no accidents. It's a question of liability. I'm making the assumption that the mayor's office sees, reads the packets. And we've had times where we've brought something forward, and if it's not legal, Suzanne Egan or some of their office lets us know before it gets to this point. So for the Traffic Commission to have measured it out, and it fits the law, and the legal department not to have told us this is something that's inappropriate, we're gonna create liability, we're gonna create liability for having parking be for a shorter period of time than what's already there, doesn't even add up. I appreciate there'll be a little bit more volume, but we're not talking about adding more liability because it's the same width of the cars that are already parking there. This is to help a local business. So I mentioned bike lanes. There are no bike lanes there any longer. So, but I also see, just from the comments here, that this isn't going to pass. So if anybody has a better solution to try to help this business out, and help some businesses downtown, please present it. But I've done all the right steps, all the right measurements, all the right pictures, all the right public meeting notices, Traffic Commission support, site visits. So we've done all the right things. I mean, do we need to refer it to legal to find out that there isn't liability?
This was referred to legal.
And they did not say this is...
They did not say that there would be liability.
So do we have a right to say this is more liable if the legal department did not say that?
I didn't say that. I said, that's a concern I have.
I appreciate it. But I don't want to say we're creating more liability.
In this, in this world of litigation, it's a concern.
Yeah, I don't want anybody to get hurt either. Just to be clear, I don't want anybody to get hit by a car. But we have parking there, and we're making it shorter-term parking. So if our law department doesn't say this increased liability, we can be concerned.
They basically said it was within our purview to do this.
Anyways, just all these random things. We're just trying to make a parking spot that's there a shorter period of time. That's it.
Counselor Grow.
I guess it's time for me to be a little more blunt. I think this is just a bad idea. I don't think it's going to help the business one way or the other. I think the parking spaces, 15 minutes are too far from Sebastian's to make a difference. I think that people will continue to park illegally in front of the business because that is the tendency of people to want to walk the shortest length of distance to get what they need to get. There's a 15-minute parking zone literally adjacent to the building around the corner. I think we should make sure that people are not parking illegally. They're, if they're there for hours on end, they need to be ticketed. But I think this is a bad idea, and I think we're making bad legislation by putting it in.
Last comment for me.
Okay, that's it.
If a business owner is requesting this, and they think it's better for their business...
On the motion, this is about parking, not about business owners. This is about parking. Please, let's keep it on topic.
Well, the comment was made, this is bad legislation. I'd like to see some good legislation.
Due to, due to safety issues that were raised.
What's that?
Due to safety issues. Had nothing to do with small businesses.
Okay. I'm just saying, there was a comment, this is bad legislation. I would love, anytime I get a request, just to send it to Counselor Gross, we could put good, perfect legislation.
We're not, we're not having a back and forth here on this, please, Counselor Grow.
Well, he started the back and forth.
Counselor Grow, please.
Bad legislation is...
Between the two of you enough.
If you guys can talk back and forth, I'm just saying, it's my opinion.
I can try to rein it in, is what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to tell Counselor Worthley that be it on discussion, on the motion, not about small businesses.
I got that part. The comment about bad legislation is a whole other conversation.
That's, that's his prerogative to make that statement about legislation. It's, it's, that's undebatable. It's, it's, you know, as far as we, that's his prerogative. You can say it. Any one of us can say it about any legislation.
I'd like to make a motion to withdraw. I'd like to make a motion to withdraw this without prejudice.
All right. There's a motion made to withdraw. Do we have a second? Do we need a second on that?
Remove the question.
Huh?
Remove the question.
I'll second it if it needs to.
Move the question? Oh, let him with, it can be withdrawn.
Withdrawn, and I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor to withdraw?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay. Yeah, it's half at eight to zero. Eight to one. Sorry. But we cannot be, we need to stay on topic. Yep. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
For council vote, decision to adopt special council permit 2025-005, Walker Street, number 26, map number 239, lot number 12, special permit for an animal boarding kennel in accordance with GZO, section 2.3.4, business uses subsection 7, animal boarding kennel, 24-hour operations in the R40 district.
You can make the motion.
Please do.
I move to adopt the decision for special council permit, SCP 2025-005, Walker Street, number 26, map 239, lot 12, special permit for an animal boarding kennel in accordance with GZO, sections 2.3.4, business uses subsection 7, animal boarding kennel, 24-hour operations in the R40 district, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Grow, seconded by Counselor Gilman. Discussion? Is it just a, a routine measure that we have to do for every, this has already been passed through the, been vetted through the full council? All right. Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counselor Benson.
Aye.
Counselor Gilman.
Aye.
Counselor Grace.
Aye.
Counselor Gross.
Aye.
Counselor Grow.
Aye.
Counselor Majota.
Aye.
Counselor Memhard.
Aye.
Oh, Jeff, I skipped you. I apologize.
I would have voted yes if asked.
Counselor Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes.
Okay. Next order of business, Counselor's request.
Individual Counselor's discussion including this?
No, we don't need that one.
Counselor's request to the mayor.
All right. Starting with Counselor Nolan.
Nice. I have no request to the mayor. I want to thank Counselor Gross, Grow, and Grace for helping me with the Fish Box Derby. It was a wonderful event. The new venue worked out perfectly. The DPW did a great job with supplying recycling barrels, for even though the bowling alley had off of the dumpster. The speeds were five seconds faster than on Rogers Street. The children had a great time. The bowling alley was fantastic with the food and the arcades. Scott Energy giving us the large parking lot was great. We learned that, that Counselor Gross yells at little children.
Very nice. I was just telling them to break before they ran over.
That was just, that was fun for you that were there. But Counselor Gross, this is, this was his second or third year doing this.
Second.
Last year, I was on injured reserve.
That's correct.
And Counselor Grow showed up, and he did all of the, the weights, measures, and made sure the paperwork was proper, the names, and made sure that everybody was legal. Counselor Grace worked on, I would say, the driver's side of the vehicles, checking the cotter pins and the steering. Myself was on the passenger side. My brother Tom from the DPW was working all-around safety. We have Darren Collins, Sarah Gray, Scott Russell, Victor, and all the members of the AMVETS that helped put this together. And it was a really good time. And I, I really wish more people got involved in this. It's a great family experience. It was really fun and fast. And Counselor Grow got a lot of good videos of everything and, and pictures. And, and maybe they'd like to speculate a little bit too on this when it comes to their time. But all in all, please be patient with the recycling and rubbish. It's coming together. The city does answer the calls and emails. The city does answer the calls and emails. However, Republic has in a hard time doing that, and we're trying to adjust. So please be a little bit patient, it will happen, and it's all coming together, and thank you all for being here tonight.
Counselor Worthley.
Yes, thank you. I was also gonna add kudos for the Fish Box Derby, but I wanna make sure Sean Nolan gets recognized for his work in helping prepare the vehicles and everything you do from the start to finish. You're very gracious and thank everybody else, but sometimes you don't tell people the work you do, so I wanna give you credit for that. I wanna thank the City Clerk's Office for running a very fair and seamless election on Tuesday. I always admire how hard your office works 365 days a year, and then you have election added into that. It's not easy, but thank you. Zorba raised a question today about the signage around the Centennial area. I'd like to put a request to the mayor, because we don't actually do signage, put a request to the mayor's office to ask the DPW director to make sure that what we voted for and where the signs are are accurate. You know, if it isn't, we'll see if we wanna move them, we must move them. If it is, then it answers that question. I also wanna thank DPW and the mayor's office for working through the strike. I think that all in all, we got through it, and a lot of people work really hard. And then lastly, on Saturday morning, 9 to 12, I have a, our fourth annual cleanup event. We're starting this year at the MBTA lot, which is next to Doyens. It needs a lot of help. I think we're gonna have a really big turnout, the weather's good. And I encourage anybody here to come and bring their friends and family and help us clean. We are now at 251 bags of litter we've collected over three years, so it's sad that there's that much litter, right? But there's, the upside is people who work hard to get it, so we might get to 300 bags by the time we get through this weekend. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Benson.
Thank you, and also first to Sean, thank you for all the work that you did on the Fish Box Derby, and the location was fantastic. Just a few things, as you've just, as you were alluding to, many residents have texted me, called me, and they're putting, regarding recycling and putting it on C Click Fix It. So that definitely will be a continued issue, and we're glad that the strike is over, and we're glad that they've come to an agreement, and the workers will get paid what they deserve. Just a few other things, there's a telephone, I'm gonna send it in an email, but there's a telephone pole issue on Green Street, as well as a pothole that people are aware of. But beyond that, I just wanna also say, let's continue to have decorum, and let us not divulge into what is wrong with politics. Let us not become what everyone hates about politics. So thank you.
Counselor Gilman.
I just wanted to remind everybody on Saturday, September 27th, from 10 to 2, at Harbor Loop is Safety Day. And Sunday is a rain day, and it's a really awesome day for grandparents to take their grandkids, their parents to take the kids, and for adults to be kids. So I would encourage you to go. If you wanna go and clean up with Counsel Worthley, you can stop by and do this after that. But it's 10 to 2 this Saturday. Thank you for Gloucester Police Department and your leadership on this.
Counselor Grace.
First of all, I want to thank Danielle, you did a fabulous job on your first solo, so good job, keep it up. You've been, it's a pleasure. And I'd like to just acknowledge that this is National Surgical Technologist Week. That is something near and dear to me, as I used to be a surgical technologist until just a few months ago. The unsung heroes of the operating room, they are the ones that keep you safe and make sure that there is no break in sterility. They have to know everything that the surgeon knows, and we get yelled at a lot. So if you see a surg tech, thank them, because they are, they rock. And then the other thing is, the West Gloucester Trinitarian Church is looking for volunteers to help unload their pumpkin truck on Saturday afternoon. It is scheduled to arrive from New Mexico, from the Navajo Nation, and it is a fundraiser for the Navajos and also a fundraiser for the church. And it's a really great service that they do, and it's a really fun pumpkin patch when it's all done. So if anybody has a little bit of time, about 3 o'clock Saturday afternoon to help out with that, that would be great, thanks.
Counselor Grow.
Just following up also on Mr. Kinnickstein's comments about the intersection. We have asked the administration to look for funding, to do a comprehensive review of that intersection, because there's so many changes that have been made, and we've asked them to do this. So I guess I would ask the administration to, to find the funding necessary to once and for all make Washington and Centennial and common, Centennial safe for everybody with, with whatever their recommendations are. And I'm still waiting for a little rainbow paint on the sidewalk out in front of City Hall.
Counselor Majota.
I had fun.
I have submitted my request to the mayor's office this morning, and just thank you, Sean, Tony, and Scott for putting that forward. And I will be tending Safe Today, thank you.
You, Counselor Memhard.
I just have to share with you how, when my wife and I were out in the driveway yesterday, around midday, and the Republic Services truck came up first to get the recycling, and then a second one came right up to get the trash. And when, when Martha and I said, you know, it's great to see you, congratulations, back on the road, there was a real sense of appreciation and excitement and acceptance from the drivers on those trucks. They, they really appreciated being acknowledged for what they've gone through the last two months. And I also'd like, just piggybacking on the flip side of that, again, I've mentioned that the C Click Fix Constituent Communications Tool was put to a test, and we really, we had a training session for how our citizens can use this to report problems and how to communicate with City Hall in a way that's efficient, not very expensive, and just really effective way of communicating between our departments and our constituents. So kudos to that tool that we, we all know how to use and encourage our constituents to use. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanna give out a shout-out to my new hero, Rose Lepicchio.
Rose Lucido Lepiccolo.
Okay, well, thank you for that. But she, it was a few, few things that, and that she really, she took, you saw the communications from her to Republic, your hands would be blistering. She really did a great job, and also the vendors for the trash bags, the, the margin didn't change when we raised the price, so they were all of a sudden paying a lot more because they have to pay upfront. So I worked with her and Connor and, and got boxes and bags to finally recognize that they need to give that discount to, to the, to the vendors, because it was just, you know, too burdensome for them. And, but she, you know, yes, they, Monday, they were supposed to do the Friday pickup for recycling, they didn't. And first thing this morning, they were there, thanks to Rose, so. That's, that Safety Day on Saturday, Cleanup Day on Saturday, Pumpkin Day on Saturday, busy Saturday, everybody, so. And the Fish Box Derby was unbelievable.
We have one for grownups, please.
It was so much fun. It was so much fun, it was so much fun working with every single kid. I was the person who they tested the brakes, and that's why I was yelling at them was, brake! Only, I only had to step out of the way of one vehicle. But it was a lot of fun, the kids had a ball. There were so, to see those, those younger kids just so energized. And it was a good, it was a good ratio of male and female racers this year. Yep, so, it was, it was just so much fun watching them all. And that's it. Motion to adjourn? Motion made by Counselor Gilman, seconded by Counselor Nolan, all those in favor?
Aye.